Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 9:02. The Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation now convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notices were given to the media on the first, on Thursday, September 13th. The second notice was given on Monday, September 17th. And for the record, today is Thursday, September 20th. It is now 9:02. The committee will hear and accept testimonies, both oral and written, on the following: Bill 318, as corrected by prime sponsor introduced by myself; an act to amend section 7307A, 7309, 7313, and 7319 of Chapter 7, Article 3, Title 3, of the Guam Administrative Rules/Regulations relative to bingo operations; and also Bill Number 281-34COR, as introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Senator Dennis Rodriguez; an act to amend section 26110.0 of Article 1 of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code annotated by labeling the current section 26110.1 to be 26111.0.1A, and adding new section 26110.1B and 26110.1C relative to requiring the electronic filing of business privilege taxes effective December 2018. Ladies and gentlemen, the conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows: Those testifying will be recognized in the order of sign-up on the sign-in sheet. Written testimony may be read lengthy. Written testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimony shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies shall be confined to the substance of the bill. Person will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone, and you state your name for the record. We will now begin hearing testimony on Bill 318-34, which is in reference to the bingo. And I have listed here the sign-in is Lynn Taidinko. Ma'am, would you please come forward? I have here also Jose Pido Terlay. I have also Ricardo Cruz. I have Michael Mariaga. I have a Joseph, I'm gonna assume that's Bora. I've got another Jose Terlay, is that for Joe, is that same with the Purple Heart you put down? Okay, so I also have, you know, I do have John Camacho and the director, John Camacho, Marie Benito, here, present. Let me see, we still got chairs? I also have, and I know Senator Klitsky is here to testify, and I'm gonna have him. Senator, you didn't sign up, but I'm gonna, I know you're here for that, because you do have testimony. Can please come forward? Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, before we start, I was actually gonna go down the list based on the sign-in, but I think there's, there's good information that Senator Klitsky would like to present, and I want to be able to offer that because, first, or no, as a matter of fact, the reason why I'm saying that is because I don't see anybody opposing it, so, opposing the amendment to the GARR. But I would have Senator Klitsky present his testimony so that everyone here can understand that his testimony is not against the bingo, it's the process. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that, and that I'm gonna push both ways, whichever way to resolve the issues that the bingo community is facing today, okay? So that there won't, hopefully, there won't be any more issues. And we'll start with, and then right after Senator Klitsky, we'll go back to, we'll start with the first person I called up, which is Ms. Taidinko, okay? After Senator Klitsky, and then we'll just work our way to the left. My right, your left, okay? Senator?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Excuse me. The earlier conversation. Mr. Chairman, Honorable Joe San Augustin and members of the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation, while expressing no position on the merits of Bill 318, I oppose its passage on procedural grounds. Passage of this bill will recreate the kind of chaos created by Public Law 23-38. That is a bill locatable only by oral tradition. In the interest of economy of effort, it's my effort, I have attached testimony for submission on Bills 283 and 284, should a public hearing ever be held. A relevant part of the testimony is identified with yellow highlight. And I now turn to that testimony. This was a bill, this was a bill that, or this was testimony that I had prepared to submit concerning the Chamorral Land Trust, to put it in the right context. And that bill would have appointed a temporary receiver. The temporary receiver would have been assigned the duty of promulgating rules for the implementation of the Chamorral Land Trust Act. So picking up with that testimony here, the temporary receiver must promulgate the rules that should have been promulgated in 1975, per Public Law 12-226. The rules were never promulgated, repeating for emphasis, the rules were never promulgated. The following was enacted by Public Law 12-226. Rules proposed by an agency and properly submitted to the legislature are promulgated in only two ways. But confusion arises from some rather unfortunate language in the administrative adjudication law, which reads, "No rule shall be effective until after compliance with the provisions of this section, and ninety calendar days have elapsed from the date of filing with the speaker. After the public hearing and the ninety days from the date of filing, the speaker may certify, and the legislative secretary attest to the default approval of the compliant bills and regulations pursuant to Chapter 1." The legislature may, by passage of a bill into law, approve, disapprove, or amend any rule within ninety calendar days from the date of filing with the speaker, except that any pending rule shall be deemed disapproved upon adjournment signed by legislature. The key, the wrong word here, the wrong mistake, Mr. Speaker, is the word amend going on. Any amendment to the submitted rule converts the proposed rule into a statute. Like any other statute, such a provision can't be amended by rule, but only by another statute. As a statute, it won't appear in the GARR, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. The expiration of ninety days for a law enacted to approve rules are the only ways rules are promulgated. A statute to disapprove rules effectively deep-sixes the rules. The 23rd Guam Legislature failed to promulgate rules as required by 12-226, creating confusion by enacting uncodified law, Public Law 23-38, which contains a statutory provision identified by the misnomer, the Paul Bredalia Rules and Regulations for the Chamorral Land Trust Commission. Because the PBRNR are not properly promulgated rules, the compiler's website for the CLTC looks like this, and you can see, no rules promulgated, because no rules were ever promulgated. Of course, the site reads, "No rules filed," because no rules were, because no rules were filed. Because of the way Public Law 23-38 is formatted, or actually not formatted, the Paul Bredalia Rules are a return to oral tradition. Non-codification of PL 23-38 and non-promulgation of the Paul Bredalia Rules means that the Paul Bredalia Rules are not on legal radar. In other words, you can't find them with the usual tools. Knowledge of the Paul Bredalia Rules can only be traced by word of mouth, back to September of 1995. The remedy here is, and then I laid out how that can be fixed, remedy here is to promulgate rules which must contain express provisions dealing with et cetera, et cetera. The rules, plus the responsibility and authority vested in the temporary receiver will allow him to clean up the mess. So that's the testimony that I was going to submit, but never got, never got the chance because the chairman, Tom, had to cancel the hearing and never reschedule it. But what this testimony is all about is this, that the way the rule-making process works is that the legislature enacts a statute, and it delegates authority to an agency to promulgate rules, and it sets out standards for those rules. When the rules, when the agency has gone through the hoops and promulgated those rules, they come to the legislature. Ninety days later, those rules are approved by the legislature. If the legislature's in a hurry, the legislature can pass a law that says those rules are approved. The legislature doesn't like the rules, it can pass a law saying, "We don't like the rules, they're disapproved." But once the legislature attempts to amend the rules, the rules are no, the amendments are no longer rules, they are statute. And you wind up with the kind of cluster fumble created by 2338, where no one could find them, because they're not rules, they're not in the GARR, and because they're not, they aren't, they weren't codified, they weren't given numbers in the Guam Code annotated, the only people who knew about those rules were kind of like soothsayers who were around at that time and still remembered them. So it was, it was an oral tradition. So I beg you, please don't make that same mistake here. If, if you don't like the rules, then disapprove the rules, and send a note to the agency saying, "Do it over, but here are some, here are some standards that you must comply with." That's one way to do it. The second way to do it is take those rules that were submitted, recast them as a statute, and enact them that way. Because it either has to be statute or rules. If, if you attempt to combine the two, you wind up with what I'm going to denominate the legislative equivalent of the duck-bill platypus. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Senator. Those are very good options, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna pursue both. I'm gonna pursue both because the, I honestly believe the bingo industry, the law has been vague for too many years, so the options are there. And I would, I do intend to pursue this full force, because the bingo industry has respooken, it was over a year, we met Reverend Taxo. We're, I'm gonna be pursuing either one, intend to get this done as fast as possible. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, Mr.
And if I can get my staff to get a copy of that, because the copy you gave didn't give me page two and page blank.
I'm sorry. I'll do it again.
But I understand.
Thank you.
Ms. Taidinko, Fortune Bingo, ma'am.
Hafide, good morning, everybody.
Do you have any written testimony with you? We can make a copy later.
Well, actually, it's, my guidelines, I'm visually impaired, so it's really big.
Not a problem.
So it's basically an oral testimony.
Okay.
Hafide, honorable senators, my name is Lynn Taidinko. Many of you know me as a self-advocate, a person with, who wears many leadership hats in Guam's disability realm. I have worked with many of you in many areas, including transportation, transportation, housing, and so forth, to enhance, to enhance the lives of our people of Guam, especially persons with disability. I come before you today to testify on behalf of myself, Armanumco, and my peers. We, the people of Guam, and yes, I'm an avid bingo player, by the way, we, the people of Guam, believe, believe that the rules and regulations of Bill 318-34 has made it very difficult for bingo establishments to succeed. And I appreciate the efforts that you've made with your amendments to rectify that. But I just wanted to express how this, how the bingo impacts our lives in so many different aspects. Okay, the equipment for bingo operations. The law currently states that the bingo licensee must own or lease the equipment from a business that's licensed with Department of Revenue and Taxation, which, to my understanding, is kind of impossible, because current, you know, currently, I know that most of the bingo establishments lease their equipment from off-island vendors, and it kind of makes good business sense, because you don't wanna, you know, you might not want to invest a whole lot of money in your bingo system and machines that will be obsolete in, you know, in about two or three years. I know since I've played, I've played with many different type of machines, so it doesn't make sense. It's like a car, when you lease it, when it becomes, you know, when newer models become available, you have the option to upgrade as well. So economically, that makes sense. And I believe that currently, there are no vendors on the island that, that do sell equipment. So if I'm not mistaken, the, everything comes from off-island, and I don't, you know, which is kind of hard to be regulated by Department of Revenue and Taxation. Another, another issue was the fact for the, where the business, the business, the bingo licensee was required to own the, to own the property, the premises where the bingo is, where the bingo games are played. Well, I do know that that kind of is impossible, because most, there are four bingo establishments on the island, and all of them are nonprofit, you know, operate under like a nonprofit organization. And me being also very familiar with nonprofit, it's, it's very difficult to own property. So, you know, we, we look for economic ways to like lease and stuff, so I do know, I appreciate again, the amendments, but I'm just letting you know that, you know, that it just doesn't make good business sense. Okay, like I stated earlier, there are four bingo establishments on the island who employ hundreds of our islanders. Many of them are parents with young school-aged children who are able to work after-school hours and help financially support their families. Many are college students who are supporting themselves as they transition into adulthood. Many are financing their education. And let us not forget, those who are trying to support their families and improve their quality of life, without being gainfully employed and properly compensated, these bingo employees may be forced into a life of crime, or forced to seek financial, financial support and assistance through government agencies, example, food stamps, welfare, and Section 8 housing. The revenue generated from the bingo operations create taxes, and therefore are infused into our island economy. The salaries of the bingo employees also contribute to our taxes and our island economy. So there are other, there are many aspects that affect, you know, the bingo operations, the human and the cultural aspects. There are misconceptions that bingo is only for the elderly population to pass the time away, especially at the senior citizen center, not completely true. Bingo play, bingo players, oh, bingo is played and enjoyed by people of all ages. Our manumco, our senior citizens who are retired and choose to play bingo, many play on a regular basis, daily, and it is their way to be entertained, to socialize with their friends and relatives, to network with their island community. I just wanted to share with you that there were some people that asked me to speak, that are, I'm not able to come today, and it'll be very brief, that weren't able to come today, but asked me to express their, their opinions. One of the regular bingo players is in her late eighties. She is, she has, she is in fragile health. The highlight of her days are to be willed into the bingo, willed into the bingo hall by her children or grandchildren, from the moment that she goes through the door. Tan Maria, I won't tell her last name, Tan Maria smiles and is greeted by the staff and the hundreds of bingo players. She said that this daily ritual brightens her day and makes her feel independent, involved, appreciated, loved, and it makes her very, very happy. Her children and grandchildren are comfortable and confident in leaving her there for several hours while Tan Maria enjoys herself. She is treated with respect and love by all. They even assist her as far as getting her drink and her food. Another elderly woman who is terminally ill, I'm sorry, terminally ill, she looks forward to playing bingo every day. She is deeply depressed by her illness, and she feels that being a part of the bingo family and the environment is a blessing and makes her very happy. The last one is a gentleman, asked me to share his story with you. He is retired from both the military and the private sector. He is on dialysis, and he has a very bad heart condition. He lost his wife to cancer a few years ago. His daughter is now his caregiver. He fell into deep depression and even wanted to give up on life. His daughter took him to bingo one day and exposed him, exposed him to the many people who became his friends and moral support group. These are just a few of the examples of how bingo, the bingo community unites and helps to impact and motivate people to feel, I'm sorry, I am visually impaired, to feel wanted, valuable, and want to live. Many young adults, of course, eighteen and older, play bingo. They network, they network, and are not out there committing crimes or doing drugs. Some young adults at the bingo are playing and caring for their elderly parents and grandparents, keeping, keeping our close-knit cultural tradition. My dear senators, we urge all of you to consider our concerns, and let us all work together to make our lives better and make a better Guam. We are willing to be there to work in a partnership. And my dear people of Guam, pay close attention to who listens, pay close attention to who takes action, and who truly cares for the people of Guam. Make an informed decision and vote for those who have your best interests at heart. Sujus Massey.
Thank you, Lynn. Ms. Benito, Deputy Director.
Hafide, and good morning, Senator. I'm here in, like Senator Klitsky, I don't oppose or support the bill. I want to, however, commend you for making this, bringing this forward. We know we've had issues in the past, and this is why we're here today. We're going to try and work together on this bill. And I concur with Senator Klitsky that we should review and go over this bill before we act on it. The reason why I, you know, these NPO, we've heard the stakeholders, we've heard their concerns, and, and had a few meetings with them, and I completely understand, their organization is here for the community. They, they help the community, whether it be education, health, keep the kids off the street, and, and doing illegal or bad activities out there. They also help, as Linda stated, you know, the manumco, the elders, who have nowhere else to go, they make friends, they unite, this is their outlet. And I too will be retiring at the end of the year, and I look forward to bingo. So that being said, we need to work together, and, you know, thank you for, for taking this approach. You're finally opening that door where, together, we can move this bill and make the required changes. Right now, as it's written, I do have some concerns, because it may affect the federal statute. So again, together, you know, we can probably look at that and see how we can do it. I'd really like to get the legal opinion, but I'm willing to work with the legislature and the community, and see how we can move forward in this, in this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Camacho, Director?
Just basically, the deputy added, basically, everything that we talked about. So just, basically, we're here to work with the legislature, work on the rules and regulations, and like our deputy said, we want to look at the legality of this on the income tax portion also. So we were willing to take that challenge and work with the legislature and move forward on these amendments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Pido, Mr. Terlay.
Good morning, Joe, Senator Joe, my camaraderie in all aspects of employment and services, thank you very much. Thank you very much for the invitation here this morning. I'm just gonna go right into the point of actually my purpose here today. When I first was approached by Mr. Nick Francisco to take a good look at the rules and regulations affecting the bingo operation and the hardship that they have in processing their license to renew their license, Mr. Nick Francisco is here today, have asked me to review the law itself and make some changes, and through the consensus of, the consensus of the group, the bingo members and those that are running the bingo operation, we sat down several times to try to iron out what are some of the problems that we face. And let me just say that, before I continue, I, I want to say that I support Bill 318-34. Initially, the amendment of 7307, 7309, 7313, 7319, of Chapter 7, Article 3, Title 3, of the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations. And basically, we, what we did was, we kind of just tailor the, the changes with the rules of the, like the deputy director mentioned, that we, to be in compliance with the federal rules, because there's a whole lot of federal rules that really affect the original writeout of the bill, the original intent of what we need to do to make it easier for, for our people. And let me just say that when I was looking at the, at the financial statement, you know, it's really alarming, because, you know, though we, like, for example, the military order of the Purple Heart, Guam Chapter, the income statement for July 16 up to July 17, it really, it really surprised me that they do make six million nine hundred thirty it really, it really surprised me that they do make six, six million nine hundred thirty-eight, thirty-seven dollars for that particular year. However, the direct expense was like five thousand seven, seven hundred, five million. Let me correct that, four million six hundred sixty-three of six hundred sixty, or they're making and, and their total expenditure is five million seven twenty-four nineteen, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. And the net income after direct expenses is like one million two hundred, two hundred thirteen ninety-eight. And then when you go down on, on the total expense, giving out the occupancy, the bingo rental, the space, the supplies, and all the things that encumbers the expenses of the operation, it went up to one million two hundred eleven two seventy-eight forty-four. And if you could go down and, and take a look at that, you know, the, the operators practically don't have anything left. And let me just say this, that, Joe, look at this, Senator, look at this. This is all the beneficiaries of, of what they make at the bingo. And aside from that, some individuals' donation regarding medical, regarding of island, regarding the poverty of livelihood, you know, this, this organization really supports it. So if you take a look at what they make, they practically, and I was telling Nick, I said, Nick, how are you guys able to run this operation when all the, the spending for giving out, donation and all that doesn't really equal an amount, an amount for you guys to, to share some of those makings, at least to refurbish the, the operation, to refurbish the building and, you know, pay maybe the employees. And, you know, the federal restriction is that, you know, the bingo operation is not authorized to employ, employ individuals. So we, we kind of just changed that, we, we didn't circumvent the law. All we tried to do is make it reasonable for the, the approval of the senators, this legislature to approve the changes that we make. You know, we talk about, we talk about a financial, financial crisis in our government. And I, I though, you know, when we look at the computation of this expenditures and money making, you know, I know it's not really gonna grow the economy, but at least there's some infusion of, infusion of money into our government. And with that, Mr. Senator, I know I work with you, I know that we can sit down and comprehend some of these problems and solidify. We've been together for the longest time and I know that I honor you and you honor me, so let's work together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. You see? Yeah, Pidu and I go back many, many years. Mike, you're next.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm reading Mr. Richard Brown, the Secretary of the Shriners testimony. Number one, the purpose of the bingo games that raise money for charitable purposes is obviously just that. We use these games for, to raise money for just and noble cause. Beyond that though, the money that is taken in by the game is not wasted. Approximately eighty percent of the revenue goes to pay the prize winners, then expenses for the venue, utilities, wages, salaries, expenses in rentals, taxes, bookkeeping, and other incidental expenses are deducted. The Guam Shrine Club Hafaday Bingo pays both limited gaming tax as well as business privilege tax on the side of the operation that covers payments to auxiliary staff as per U.S. Internal Revenue Service rules that govern similar operations in the mainland. Second, our auxiliary member that are receiving remunification for their work in making the operation possible are employed and receiving wages and benefits that they would not otherwise have. This has the effect of lowering the level of unemployment on Guam. They, their pay is reasonable for the job they are doing and it allows them to feed families and provide housing. Third, beyond that, many of our patrons are there for the charity that we are supporting. Many are manamko, manamkos that would not have another, another opportunity to get out of the house and enjoy the company of others. We are providing entertainment that many of our patrons will willingly give their tanks for this pleasure. And we also have submitted like close to five hundred signatures for this petition, sir. Fourth, and last, we have been operating for some years in the present manner. And in this, it is only recently that the rules have been reinterpreted, significantly changed the rules and potentially shutting down every bingo game on island that is raising money for charitable purposes. Between Guam Shrine Club and the other operators of the games that raise funds for the wounded veterans and the youth golf tournament, we feel that our games are being operated to the highest level of ethics and rectitude. And we do support rules that would keep greed and criminal activities out of business. This is from Richard Brown. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Bora.
Yes, Senator. Okay, thank you for this opportunity to, to come before you this morning to testify. I stand in support and agreement with the testimony submitted by Senator Robert Klitsky that it is better to defer this, this amendment to the reporting agency, let them have input into what changes need to be made. I agree with that, you know, before we just make these amendments to these changes that are, that are contained in this corrected version for this bill. In addition, I, I'm also here to share some observations of certain bingo organizations that I have been, had the opportunity to participate in. I am happy to see Mr. John Camacho, the Director of the Revenue and Taxation who is here today, because I like to share these observations. In particular, I am referring to Hafaday Bingo. I have been a patron there. I have seen situations where it is pretty much not just a social bingo operation, it is pretty much a casino. They, this bingo allows poker card games to happen in their bingo halls. Their bingo starts at seven thirty PM every evening. Their bingo, the doors to the bingo open at four PM. At that moment, you go there any day, you will see a regular group of bingo players who come in over, they have tables, more than ten tables at a time, and they're openly playing card games for money. This money is being transacted at, at, at that time, at, at that moment when the card games are going. I just wonder, does revenue and tax, are they aware of this? Is the, there, there is payouts there, card players, seven or ten to a table, you know, they're transacting cash out in the open? Is, is that revenue, the winnings there, is that being taxed by the, by Hafaday Bingo? I mean, why, is, is that allowed in their license for, to operate a bingo? In addition, there are about more than ten speed bingo machines that are present in this bingo hall. It is conveniently situated in a very discreet area? It calls into question, is that legal? Who owns those machines? Who owns those machines? What kind of revenue is, is being paid into this Hafaday Bingo? Is that being properly taxed? Why, why is it so discreet if it's open to, to everyone? Okay, those are the things that I call into question. I have seen games when they have these, they call bingo bashes, you know, there's, the crowd is overloaded, there's fire hazards, exit points to the bingo place is blocked by tables because they are, you know, putting a lot of tables out without due regard to any safety for the, the players that are there. It's, there's just really no, no control. I, I really feel that there should be some kind of a gaming commission that should be active to observe, you know, some of these bingo operations. Yes, they say they, they are nonprofit, but my observation is they, they kind of hide behind that nonprofit picture and they just seem to operate with impunity, you know, doing what they feel is right because they know that there is no monitoring of, you know, these kind of operations. As a, as a patron, I have raised concerns, filed a grievance, a complaint against an employee of the, of the bingo. And in return, instead of, you know, they, they, when you do that to, to management, they, they turn around and they, they, their, their response to, to, to you filing a grievance or complaint is they ban you from the bingo. Okay? That, that again, that's why I strongly feel that there is some kind, there should be some kind of gaming commission. And I just want to make this correction, I know there's four bingo organizations in Guam. This, this specific concerns that I'm mentioning right now is specific to Hafaday Bingo. I have raised this concern to the manager, to, to, to the members of the Shriners who, who support, who are the licensed operator, who have the license for this nonprofit, nothing has ever done. So I'm just wondering, you know, is, is this how we operate? Is this how they, they, you know? I know there has been testimony that bingo is a social, you know, a social game, but really, Senator, when you look at the payouts, look at the newspaper every day, there's daily payouts of six thousand dollars, you know, for every bingo game, ten thousand dollar giveaways. Is that really a social bingo? That is big time, you know? And there are, yes, they talk about people coming in there to enjoy, to relax, but you're not seeing the part of financial hardships that this could also potentially create to some people that may have a gambling addiction, okay? That is a reality. Is there any, do these nonprofit groups, do these bingo operators, do they provide a, some counseling outlet for those people that may have a, a gambling addiction? I don't know, I haven't seen any. I have visited some bingo, bingo games or parlors in the States where it is operated by a casino at a hotel. And really, when you go there, you see the payout is basically controlled, you know, eight hundred dollars per bingo game. That's why when you compare it to some of the games here, especially, you know, the payouts of six thousand dollars, that's not a social bingo. You know, that is basically professional big time. And there, and I see people that, you know, everyday normal people with eight to five jobs, they go there basically because they're depending, they use that venue as a way to sustain their livelihood. Okay? So yes, there's some hurt behind this, there's, yes, there's this thing, you know, that are, that happening, there's some good things for the social, but there is also that, that opportunity there for people to, you know, to struggle, be a financial burden on their life. The, the employees of the Hafaday Bingo, I really, the basically, the rank and file, they're very kind people. I speak about this for this testimony, for those, management and higher, okay? I, I have good, good relationships with the rank and file, the runners, you know, they're very nice people, very kind people. But it's a totally different reception that you receive when you go up to the management level of Hafaday Bingo. I have no qualms, no negative things about the other bingos. I speak entirely for my experience with Hafaday Bingo.
Okay. But, but your concerns are you're not against the amendment, right? Am I correct? That, that's what I understood in the beginning, because that, that's what the substance of the bill is. You're, I understand the points you brought up, but just going back, I heard, I understood that you're not against the amendment to the rules and regulations, am I correct?
Yes, in a way, yes, yes, I am against that. Yes.
I, I, I think, Ms. Bora, we can address your other issues separately.
Yes, yes, I am against it. I, I am against that. I defer to what Senator Klitsky, let the agency that is empowered to, let the agency who was empowered to, to, to do this review, let them do their job.
Understood.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Before we go on, because we still have others to speak, I don't wanna, I'll ask all the folks that have spoken to, please stick around and I will get the other folks to come up and speak so we can kind of close it up a little bit. We have Martha, Marty, we got Marty, and we got Roxanne Salas, oh no, you got written testimony, Roxanne, and Mr. Ricardo Cruz, sir. Yeah, just, just anywhere in the middle. Did, did she sign in? Okay, she signed in, but you're the only one for oral, but no problem, you can have her come up. Okay, are, are we just about ready? I, I just want everybody to understand. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll, we'll just quiet down a little bit. Let us understand that, number one, for almost two years, I've been trying to work this out with the bingo and nothing moved. I introduced this bill to make the changes in the rules. I understand what Senator Klitsky stated. If need be, I will change the title of the bill to make it a law. We're gonna do what we need to do to keep bingo going. The issues brought up by Mr. Bora, that's management. The issue to deal with the gaming commission, that's the department. If it's illegal gambling going on, that's the police department. Let's, let's put things in its proper place and let's just focus on what the issue is today, is to try to remove the restriction from bingo organization from having to have a nonprofit building, rent wherever is available. Number two, you don't have to own the equipment, you rent or lease the equipment. And if the folks off island are not licensed, then they have no business renting to you. We'll get, make sure they're licensed. And then the third part is about the wages to the auxiliary members or members working there. It, the law says thirty dollars, the Department of Revenue Taxant expressed that there may be a federal statute that may prevent changing it. I'd rather take the risk and bring a lawyer to come and tell us that it's a federal, we can't change it, than to assume that we can't because Uncle Sam says no. I've served in the army, several people who served in the army and the military, when we're under their umbrella, will say, yes, sir, we're not. We do what we need to do to get the job done, that's what I believe in. Okay? So, Mr., sir, Mr. Cruz, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Ricardo Cruz and I represent the Fortune Bingo. I want to express my appreciation and I want to acknowledge the lobbyists that came up before you in, in, in clarifying the status of the different organizations, bingo organizations. I, and withstanding with everything that has been said in abiding with the law and trying to, trying to move forward. My, my main concern right now for taking this opportunity that you've given me is to address the activities in-house. And my, my, my reason for that is to clear the fog in your, in your mind, the picture that has been given to you by the, the last speaker. Myself, as I said, I represent Fortune Bingo. I want to be recognized by the crowd or by the attendees in this room. I am a retired Marine and serve proudly. And as, as the chairman has indicated, we are serving the military and we stand by laws, regulations. And I want to address the other organizations that what happens in-house is actually your control, as was mentioned by the chairman. If it pertains to you as far as what Mr. Bora said, we need to clean house. We need to express to the players that a concern has been brought up in the in-house activity. Clarifying the, the crowd in each of the bingo hall. There is a capacity in each organization or each building on each bingo hall. or each building, on each bingo hall. Myself, I can testify that that is not a concern with Fortune Bingo. And the reason is, I drafted, I drafted the fire escape, exits within the building. I presented the fire escape to the bingo players. I expressed it. And I designated certain areas within the group of where their exit is. And not for everybody to run out in the front door or otherwise crowd the exits. If the building states it's a capacity of 600, ladies and gentlemen, please abide by the, by that regulation or that standard for the safety of your players, for the safety of the people that is within your responsibility of that building. Because again, we have to answer. The issues that was brought to you, Mr. Chair, is actually maybe alarming, maybe not, but in reference to that activity as far as playing cards, we can say that it's, we can look at it in different ways. It's past time. As was mentioned, the door for the bingos may open at four, but the bingo doesn't start until 7:30. Of course, the players are concerned with how many people or anticipating how many people would be playing that evening. So they want to come in early. Three hours of time sitting down there because you want to find yourself a good location or your preferred location within the, within the hall. You have the tendency to have, be preoccupied in the meantime. I almost want to hesitate to say that for the most part, it's culture. And don't hold me to that. But no matter where you go, where people are waiting around, they self-entertain themselves, they entertain themselves self in different ways. In this way, maybe playing a card, and, and yes, because I've seen it, playing cards with money on the table. That's a confined and a controlled game within, amongst themselves. It's not inviting, it's not inviting the whole people in the, in the hall. So for three hours, you're sitting there. What sort of entertainment other than the media or other than playing your preferred music? And believe me, we have different nationalities in the bingo hall and we can't have all of the different nationalities playing their choice of music. So how, so how you perceive the in-house or table gambling? I want to say table gambling, not in-house, because we don't sponsor gambling in-house anyway, card games for that matter. But that's how I see that, as well as what Mr. Borja is trying to convey to you. Do we, do we somehow seize that operation and just have people domain for three and a half hours until the bingo starts? If you do that in any way, you won't have patrons, you won't have customers. You have, you have to allow some sort of entertainment amongst themselves. But by God, please don't invite the whole patrons to gamble in the hall. Like I say, I want to, I'm still reluctant to say it's culture, but for me, it's just a self-entertainment thing on each table. If there's a number of tables that's actually playing cards with money up on the front. I'm not going to deny, Mr. Chair, I have stopped card game on a table when I see the money. So taking responsibility on your, on your organization is what it matters, is what actually counts and what matters. And I'm doing this because I want to clear the fog on the chairman's mind about whether or not Fortune Bingo authorizes a complete gambling within the hall. No, we don't. No, we don't. And my operators will testify, my operators will testify that in fact, we don't condone that to be publicly visual. And again, what you do on your table is up to you. But seeing cash, it's your way of controlling the matter. Find a way to control the matter. Do we, do we need to provide chips, poker chips? Kind of redundant or ridiculous. Kind of redundant. All right?
All right.
Mr. Chair, I thank you for this opportunity to, like I say, to clear the fog in what's been given to you. And withstanding with the lobbyists that it was presented to you, I agree with what has been said, in accordance, in accordance to the, to the resolution that you, you put out in moving the bingo activity further. And as I noticed that you were lastly provided a copy of Fortune Bingo's involvement with the community in donating money. Please feast your eyes on that. And I'm sure the other bingo hall activity, bingo hall operators can provide you with a list also as then. We are not, we are not eating up all the money for ourselves. We give it to the community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Salas, right? Okay, Ms. Salas.
Good morning. I'm Roxanne Salas, Secretary General for the Guam National Golf Federation, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Richard Soblan, who submitted his written testimony. He's unfortunately off island, so I'm here to represent him. Let me read his letter. "Dated September 16, 2018. Dear Senator St. Augustine, the Guam National Golf Federation, GNGF, supports Bill Number 318-34. These changes to the bingo regulations are needed so nonprofit organizations will be in total compliance with laws as they conduct their bingo fundraising activity. The GNGF has used bingo proceeds for many years to support Guam's national golf teams and junior golf programs. The program is dedicated to training Guam's top adult amateur golfers so that they can compete against the world's top golfers internationally. As far as our junior golfers are concerned, in addition to providing opportunities for them to compete internationally, our program also provides opportunities for them to travel and compete in golf tournaments on the U.S. mainland where they have a chance to be scouted by collegiate coaches who are looking to provide college golf scholarship opportunities. We have seen several of our former junior players receive scholarships to UC Berkeley, San Diego State University, and most recently Gonzaga University. Aside from the funding aspect of our program, the GNGF's junior program teaches our young golfers the importance of dedication, hard work, integrity, honesty, and sportsmanship, values which today's youth are struggling to learn. In order for GNGF to comply with bingo regulations, the changes proposed in Bill Number 318-34 are needed. Discussion of the changes is provided below. Suppliers do not sell bingo machines on Guam because there is no repair service here. GNGF has to lease bingo machines from an organization licensed by DRT. GNGF feels that a CPA certification of bingo financials is too expensive and not needed. GNGF's accounting staff will provide accurate financials and tax returns to DRT. Since GNGF's activities involve the game of golf, it is impossible for GNGF to conduct at least 50% of its non-bingo activities at the bingo facility, thus, the application of such 50% requirement is impractical. GNGF determined that paying employees only $30 per day did not comply with labor laws. GNGF pays its employees based on the prevailing wages for their positions. Thank you for proposing Bill Number 318-34 and for arranging the public hearing on bingo as the proceeds will surely continue to support over 70 adult Guam amateur golfers and 50 junior golfers. The GNGF will attend this hearing and answer any questions the senators may have on this matter. Very respectfully, Richard Soblan, President, Guam National Golf Federation."
The new bingo group.
Good morning, Senators, and good morning to everybody here. My name is Alvin Ancheta. Currently, I am the Secretary of the Federation of Pangasinans in Guam. FOPOG, as you already know, has been one of, I think, the oldest bingo houses that is doing bingo in Guam. Our records speak for our, for themselves. As a nonprofit organization, we provided and we have helped all types of donations. Think of it, plan it, whatever it is, we already have supported those things already. And let our records speak for ourselves because as far as we know, as a, as an organization, our track record is the longest, but we are one of the most, that are most silent about this. And what we are just requesting for now, because we have heard that there have been meetings that have been in place, we would like to be part of that one also, because I think it's about natural that we be part of those meetings and, and meetings to discuss the betterment of bingo, bingo playing here in Guam. I do support, as the representative currently, because our president and all, most of the officers, high officers are currently off island, so I'm speaking in their behalf. Our president, retired Major Vic Revo, is going to give his written statement and I think on the agreement of the amendments of what you are proposing on these amendments, he will be providing a written statement. Also with us, with regards to Federation of Pangasinans and how we run our bingo, I think that with regards to the compliance part of everything that we have done, I think that we have completed all of that requirements that is in the law. Because I'm very sure that we are, because I am the one who compiled it. I prepared it myself. And it's already, and it's already given to revenue and tax. That's the reason why we're able to operate today also. Because ethically, we do think that it's just regular for us to be able to continue nonprofit status by making sure also that we follow all regulations. In behalf of our members, who are also the ones that are volunteer workers at the bingo, they are also in agreement that there is a need to really change, especially the amount of compensation that is needed, because they are not only, most of them are not only like relatives to us, but they are friends and families and they are retired. And I think that it's better for them also to be able to make the work easier. With regards to the bingo machines, I think that the technology today that had happened when we are using technology, high technology now to be able to play bingo is not really, it's really an advantage for the manamkos and all the players that don't know how to really play bingo. At least there's a machine that would be able to accommodate them. And aside from that one, even in our halls and even in our bingo places, I think FOPOG has been checked, has been managed, and has been, we already have memorandums that we have released to our players about specific gambling requirements, non-gambling requirements, ADA compliance requirements, and all of those stuff are already being done at the bingo hall. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marty, did you want to say something?
Yes. My name is Martha Harapar. I've been involved with the bingo industry since back in 2008. Started out at Guam Bingo World at Greyhound, supporting the Purple Heart as well as the Guam Amateur Basketball Union. So since my whole exposure to the bingo industry, just like some of the speakers spoke, it's not just a social gathering, it is a compiling of community support for all the different nonprofits. And just like how Purple Heart, Rick Cruz, mentioned, there are multiple organizations that benefit from the operating nonprofit. And same thing with Pangasinans. They've given away so many scholarships. Currently, there will be a fifth bingo that has already received its bingo permit, which is Lucky Laddie Bingo, operating under Tatua, which is going to reach out for Tamuning, Tuman, and Harmon, which will open in October. So everybody is aware of the laws, and yes, it is very needed that we do amend it, because $30 a day is less than minimum wage. When you consider how Mr. Borja spoke up, that the doors open sometimes 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, the workers after the bingo players leave, they're still cleaning up sometimes 10:30, 11 o'clock. So if you do the math, that is below minimum wage. There are technical staff, there's management staff, and then there's your cashiers and runners. So yes, a prevailing wage makes sense. Most of, everybody knows that it's just not practical to live on $30 a day. And especially, you have to consider the runners. A lot of times, they are doing their hardest to work with people, but they get short. And those runners have to pay those shortages every day before the end of their shift. So sometimes that $30 a day ends up being negative for those runners. So you have to take that also into consideration. As far as the machines, yes, I'm, I'm in support of that change as well. We do have a legal distributor, reseller, or representative, ground agent, whatever you want to call them. I do know that there's local representation for some of those suppliers. However, again, as long as they comply with the Foreign Business License Law of Rev and Tax, you know, then we should be able to keep coming with that technology. You know, a lot of those manamkos, they like the machine, they can make the screen bigger, they can read it better, you know, they don't have to squint. And then again, on the final one, which is the lease, nonprofits don't operate on that much cash, so it only makes sense that they may not own the real estate. So it's only sensible that they do also rent or lease the location as well. So as long as everybody's complying under Guam law, we should be fine. So I understand what Senator Klitschko mentioned and whatever the legalities or however, I'm just glad that you are working for the betterment of the rules and for the betterment of the bingo operations entirely.
Thank you. We have one last speaker. Tara Rogers. Are you here, Tara Rogers? Or is it Haro? I know this. You, you ma'am, please come for it. One last speaker. There's the shirts. Man.
There you go. Okay, hi, Mr. Senator. You don't know me, but I know who you are. You know my family?
Okay.
My family is, my mother-in-law is Delphina Titigui from Mariso. Okay? I am the mother of Justice Josephine Goffigan Titigui. Okay? You know who my daughter is, right? The first bone marrow drive here on Guam. Okay? And I'm here because I want to thank the Shriners for giving me the opportunity to work, to help a child. Okay? And so for me to sit here and listen to somebody saying that we're running things illegally, I don't, I don't put up with that. You know our family background. Okay? I do not. I am here for the kids. And I'm 55 years old, a senior citizen, and my bones ache every night, but it's nothing compared to what the kids go through.
From the heart.
From the heart. I'm sorry, but we, our bingo don't ban people for nothing. You have to have some kind of reason for us to ban you. It's too bad it didn't work out for you. Okay? Thank you. I just wanted to let it out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senator.
I think the others on Austin, the senior, Joe, Uncle Joe, I think you want to speak. And you'll be the last speaker, right? Okay, Joe.
Mr. Chair, good morning. You know, everyone, thank you for having me here this morning.
You know, everyone, thank you for having me here this morning. I, the one good thing about having families and friends is if you're in another meeting, they'll call you and tell you you need to be here. So I thank you. And, you know, I put a question mark on the sign and sheet because I wanted to read what the bill was all about. Thank you for everything that you're doing, Mr. Senator. Thank you for everything that you're doing for our community, our veterans, and the organizations of all the bingo organizations that there are here on Guam. I don't play bingo. However, I respect and appreciate the activity that has been taking place here in Guam, because I know many of our manamko, many of our veterans, many of our, my worker that works for me goes to bingo a lot. And when she wins, she comes in happy. When she loses, she comes in happy. Because she knows it goes to a good cause. And so I told her, one of these days, I want her to take me bingo. Because I want to learn how to bingo. But I want to share with everyone here that please, take care of yourselves amongst yourselves within your organizations. Do the right thing, do the good things so that we don't lose such a good opportunity and a good program that benefits to the organization, or more so benefits to the community and those in need. So with that said, Mr. Senator, Mr. Chair, I fully support this bill and I thank you. And I hope that you continue to look after our people like you do with this bingo, so that they could continue to have a fine, happy life. This is Massey.
Ladies and gentlemen, that pretty much concludes this hearing. I just wanted to go back and kind of remind you all. Number one, Senator Klinsky brought up the issue of the amending of the rules. I will forward a copy to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, but rest assured, it may say today amendment of rules. Once I sit down with legal, it may say introduction of law. One way or the other, I'm not going to stop until the changes are made. Because it's about taking care of what shouldn't have happened maybe fifty years ago. Because a lot of the laws in Guam were created over fifty years ago. And there needs to be changes. And the Department of Revenue and Taxation know the changes need to come, but they're loaded with a bunch of stuff. I'm going to introduce something, I'm going to introduce this. We're going to make the changes. May it be a rules and regulation or an introduction of law. Because the hearing was made, it was mentioned today, the amendment to this bill can change from an act to amend that section of the rules, or an act to amend the law in bingo to include these items, okay? So just, I want to make sure that everybody understands, or rest assured, just because Senator Klinsky says we shouldn't do it this way, us military folks know there's another way to skin a cat when it walks down the street. And we'll do what we need to do to make it right. We need to take care of the bingo industry, we need to take care of all the folks that everybody, I mean, I only got Purple Heart, I know that once the golfers and everybody else and the Shriners present this, and I'm very familiar with the Shriners because I'm a member of that group. I'm aware of all the kids that get taken care of, especially when the doctors come from Hawaii. There are many benefits. And I, and all of you are aware that the OPA brought up, it's an eighty million dollar industry? Yeah. They say there's two million dollars missing? That's revenue and tax problem, that's not the bingo's industry. Bingo just record what you need to report, and then we'll get revenue and tax when they finally get more people to help them do what they need to do. The concern that Mr. Borja brought up, that's something that I would ask the Department of Revenue and Tax when they get, I guess they just have to work their budgets so the compliance officers can go out there and be at the area. And I, and I bring that up, the compliance officers, because when it used to be the Guam Greyhound was running a dog race, there were compliance people there. Maybe that's another way of, we need to address revenue and taxation's shortfall of people, that at every bingo event, there is an agent to make sure that there's no illegal gambling, there's no illegal bingo, there's registered bingo. Okay? And I honestly believe it'll help the organization do what they want to do. Okay? That being said, if there is, anyone want to submit any written testimony? The committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation and submit it via email, senatorsjoessenaukstein@gmail.com. My office located at Rand Care Building, second floor, suite three seven six one, Marine Corps Drive, Tamuning, Guam. Ladies and gentlemen, Bill number, the public hearing on Bill number three one eight has now concluded. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for showing up. Ms. Benito, don't go out, because we got the next bill. Relative to requiring the electronic filing of business privileged taxes effective December twenty eighteen, that's this year, this year. And the folks that have signed up was Mr. Linsangan. And we have the director and deputy director and Mr. Frank Luhan. We will begin with Mr. Linsangan, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Sefri Linsangan. Mr. Chairman, I, I support this bill if some provisions will be amended.
Okay.
You have a very good intention. Because most of the business have the resources and expertise to file electronically. But there are still some that don't have the capability to file electronically. Now, my concern here is the the fees, imposing a twenty-five dollars fee for small business that is not capable of filing electronically. Because just like in self-check-in in the airline, you can self-check-in in their machine, and if you have not that expertise, then the staff will assist you without any charge. Now, and there is still some business, Mr. Chairman, that, that there are times that they don't even have any sale for a month. And if they don't have also the expertise to file electronically, then they have to still pay twenty-five dollars at the same time, declare zero sale. And it will, this will hurt the very small business, you know, that's trying to survive. you know, that's trying to survive. And my other concern is sometimes the machines are malfunctioning. And if the machines are malfunctioning, then again, they'll be charged for $25. Because you have a good intention also that the staff will help those people that don't have the skill to file electronically. But there will be instances that the machine is malfunctioning or they are ashamed to call the staff. Because they'll be embarrassed. They'll be exposed that, oh, this guy does not know how to to file or use the computer. You know, I think that's invasion of human privacy. And sometimes the staff will be irritated. They will not be too friendly to assist the very small business owner that don't have the expertise. And then, in token, if the small business forgot or did not meet the deadline in your provision, they will still be charged of $25 after, if they don't meet the deadline on the filing fee, even they file electronically. Because aside from that, Mr. Chairman, they'll be assessed with penalty charges. So I think that's already sufficient. And there are times also that a very small business don't have a credit card or a small business, his credit cards are maxed out. Because in filing electronically, then it's imposed here that the only payment is by card. So if the small business credit card is maxed out or the very small business don't have a credit card, then they'll be charged of $25. And that's my main concern, Mr. Chairman. And despite your very good intention to speed up the filing, I think we need to help and look at this very small business owner and those people that needs help. And yeah, it will improve or generate some revenue. But $25 is a magic number, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I was thinking that in order to generate revenue, somebody from the legislature, especially those that are outgoing, will introduce a bill that will penalize the 50,000 people that did not vote. Just like in Dedado. Sorry, just give me one minute. Just like in Dedado, only 45,000 population, only 5,689 voted. There should be at least 20,000 registered voters. In Gigo, only 2,589 voted out of 25,000 population. There should be at least 12,000 registered voters. In Tamunings, the worst, 2,100 only voted out of 20,000 population. There should be 10,000 registered voters. I hope somebody will look at that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for your kind intention.
Thank you for addressing the $25 fee penalty. I have now the three other folks. Don't leave yet, sir, because I want to be able to address that before we end the hearing. Sir, Mr. Camacho.
Hafaday, Chairman, Senator Augustine, and I wish they were members of the committee. But thank you for this opportunity to present this testimony on behalf of the Department of Revenue and Taxation on Bill 281-34. DRT fully supports the intent of this bill. What we did, basically, based on the available data we have from 2016 to 2018, provided a breakdown of all the e-file versus manually filed returns. In 2016, as you know, there's a great number of people that are already utilizing our e-file for our BPT returns. which is 50% of the total of the 178,687 that actually filed for the tax year 2016 manually. That's the one, basically, we're trying to avoid. returns that were manually filed that we had to process in 2016. And down the line, we have the numbers for 2017 and 18, 106,278 and e-file and 56,536 manually for a total of 162,814 that actually were filed for 2017. And as of August of this year, we have 86,980 that were filed and electronically and 65 accounts for 65,776 that actually were filed manually that we continue to process today. Those percentages are there. And basically, this is one of the reasons why we really support the mandatory filing of BPT. So forth. You know, when you look at mandatory e-filing, it would eliminate the need to manually process and input monthly BPT returns into the system. This will enable accuracy and efficacy in tax collections. It will eliminate backlog in processing of e-filing allows to a live interface of our system. It will reduce, if not eliminate, the volume of collection held in suspense account pending interfacing with corresponding receivables, thus allowing a timely tracking of outstanding BPT, speeding up collection again. It further allows for a timely capture of BPT data for various purposes to include tracking and projection of revenues and economic trends. Furthermore, BPT activities will greatly enhance in the areas of tax credit programs, nonprofit organization, compliance, bonded warehouse operation, and proper claiming and application of exemptions and deductions. Additionally, full implementation of the bill, if enacted, will eventually lead to cost-saving and revenue enhancement to include elimination of paper, filing leading to reduced waste. It will also significantly reduce the storage space required to maintain these paper returns. DRT fully supports the intent of the bill, and we offer the following recommendation. DRT is requesting inclusion of the various taxes below in a measure that will also provide timely filing and collections of wealth as well as monitoring and tracking of the transactions. These taxes include but are not limited to alcohol and tobacco, hotel occupancy, liquid fuel tax, use tax, limited gaming tax. And on my last written testimony on the back, we have attached an enclosure of the recommended statute to be included in the mandatory e-filing. And those, basically, are there. That way, you know, when people start to file returns, not only that it will be only for GRT or BPT, but also for alcohol, liquid fuel, automatic search charts, tobacco tax, and I'm sorry, the general sales tax has been repealed. But these are, basically, if we amend this section and we make them mandatory, it will come in flow with the BPT returns, the GRT returns. And likewise, we have also the annual returns for the nonprofit organization. They can file that electronically annually. Use tax also, which is our returns that are not in the BPT. So when people file use tax, it will be mandatory. And also for the occupancy tax, which are all different chapters. As actually is the limited gaming tax, in other words. So one of our recommendations is to try and include everything so that whether it's an annual return or whether it's alcohol, tobacco, or use tax, or hotel occupancy, it's mandatory. And that will basically cover every, almost every taxes that's required to be filed with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Once again, thank you for the, oh, I'm sorry. We have some comments here that I'm asking the legislature to look into. We can discuss this at a later time. But to conclude my written testimony, once again, thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony in support of an intent of Bill 281-34. If you contact our office after anything further in regards to this testimony. And lastly, I just really wanted to emphasize that. I know, Senator, we had previous hearings to try and make it mandatory. I think there's two or three hearings in the past. And hopefully, that we're asking this legislature to please pass this bill so we can actually, you know, save time, save money, and basically even, even, you know, give all these data that we need to the legislature and to the people of Guam on an expedited matter and timely matter. So please, I ask that this legislature passes this bill.
Thank you, sir. I was looking at your testimony. You got comments here, you identified. Because you know what? I'd like to expand the bill, like you mentioned in your comments, to include even the e-filing, all the filing. You have the effective date of December 2018. Is this a tax period to be filed? What would the Department of Revenue and Tax recommend? But before you answer that, maybe we'll go to Ms. Benito and then Mr. Frank, because he's the O-Tech, right? Technology guy. The guy's going to help clean it all up and put it all in technology, and that's the key. Ms. Benito.
Hafaday, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to come down and provide oral presentation on this bill. And as the Director mentioned, we fully support this bill, but we still need to review some of the contents in it. And one of my questions, and again, you know, like you mentioned earlier, we've been going through this bill for several years now. This will absolutely help the department as far as efficiency, timely recording, timely payments, timely assessment. So it's going to be a big leap forward in our production and also in efficiency. And I know that some of the problems in the past with e-filing, because it's currently available, but a lot of taxpayers don't want to use this e-filing system because of the fees involved. If they charge, they don't want to pay the fee, so they come to the department to make that payment. So one of your incentives is to remove the fees if they file timely. And I understand, Mr., I'm sorry.
Linsangan.
Nizaki?
Linsangan.
Linsangan, hi. Thank you for coming to testify on behalf of the small taxpayers. I understand his concerns. And what we would like to possibly propose is a timeframe. Because like IRS, yes, everybody has their challenges in meeting this law. But if we give them advanced notice, like possibly make this effective maybe next year so that the businesses can start preparing for it. And one of his concerns was credit cards. Okay, their credit cards are maxed out, but you're going to come in and pay cash. So pay the credit card and then make the payment online. So there's a lot of things that we can do, and we really appreciate moving forward like this. So we need to work also about how we can make it easier for them. And the incentive is very good, the $25 fee. We appreciate, although what we're trying to do is get it mandatory, just like IRS, everybody has to file mandatory. I believe Hawaii also, their GRTs are e-filled. So we have to look at how they do theirs and what are the fees and the challenges before we implement this. So I'm thinking maybe next year we can implement this law just so everybody can prepare and start looking at how they can adjust their needs, the businesses, to meet this law.
Okay, so you're looking at maybe June 2019?
Correct.
Okay, during the season, everybody files their business license?
Yes, let everybody, yes, the businesses get used to the idea that it's mandatory. Give them a chance to possibly get the system, get a system where they can file electronically. So we'll give them the opportunity first to try and meet the requirements and then make it mandatory.
Okay, and on the $25 fee, do you, the initial intent of the $25, so while Mr. Linsangan is here, is actually, it's almost a deterrent. So folks can actually realize that it's important to start filing e-filing. But I have no problem removing it. But there's got to be some form of repercussion that if you don't file at all, you got to pay the fine. You got to pay some fee. They just can't take it lightly. Because unfortunately, some businesses, and I know of several of them, they're like, no biggie, I didn't make any money. Or they met the threshold where they're not going to get taxed. So it's not important. They need to understand that it's important for the government to know what's out there, regardless if you're being taxed or not. You can't just assume that, well, I don't pay any taxes on it anyway because I broke even. No, 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 no. You're required to report, report, and walk away. Understood, don't pay no taxes. But not filing, there's got to be some penalty. You just can't get away with doing this.
Yes, I agree with you. And in fact, I believe one of your intents also was to possibly use those fees for the staff or for maintaining the IT.
The kiosk.
Right, the kiosk. So on that note, Mr. Frank Luhan will further elaborate on the O-Tech side.
Okay, good, great. We can get a real kiosk, turn it like the airlines does, and we can start doing business faster at Revenue and Tax. Mr. Luhan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to actually testify in support of this Bill 281. But I do support it. I echo the, you know, the comments that my colleagues have made regarding the benefits that this bill brings to bear. But as, one of the realities, however, is that in anything good, there's always these front-end costs that need to be considered. So considerations for these kinds of change includes things like the cybersecurity piece, the risk assessment that needs to be done by putting all of these things online and the increased activity, the efforts that need to be done by the vendor to modify the code, that will cost us if this bill is instituted or implemented. And one of the other major considerations for any kind of online application is the compliance of what is called the ADA 508 compliance for these websites. These all need to be considerations that are factored into the costs. So one of the outside-of-the-box thinkings that we've had is to look at the $25 fee. And actually, when I look at that, per se, I agree that it's a good incentive or deterrent, if you will, for more people to gravitate towards filing online. But what I'd like to add is another dimension where within the first year of implementation, we bring that fee to anywhere between $30 to $40 to fund the actual implementation efforts for this online system. In addition to the funding would be also the penalties that are applied. I'd like that to, the penalties be considered to fund all of that. Because again, when we look at what it will take to implement this bill, it's the funding of the workstations at the kiosks. It's the funding of all the, because we are very much vendor-dependent, that there's nothing that they do that will not cost us in terms of these changes. So I'd like to consider that. And if anything, if we raise the fee from $25 to either $30 or $40, I'd say that should only go for about 12 months for the implementation. And once everything is operational and working as prescribed and we're compliant, then we roll it back. We roll it back to keep those fees in check. In closing, the Office of Technology supports any and all modernization initiatives that builds on the efficiencies of government services for our citizens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Luhan. Now, for all four of you, I'm just going to pose a question and maybe Revenue and Tax can answer this. How much is the government avoiding in the fee when everybody runs their credit cards and everything? What is the cost? What has the government saved? And the reason why I ask this is because OPIAD brought this up. Of the hundreds of millions of dollars that the government collects, they only deferred less than $10 million. And if that cost is absorbed by the government, maybe more folks will come in without the cash and start running the credit cards. I mean, I hear this from a lot of folks. They actually go to ATM just to get cash so they don't have to pay the 1%, 2%, 3%, whatever percentage. And I'm trying to make sense of this is that if we're only avoiding less than $10 million and it's slowing down the collection of payments, then we need to maybe waive that, consider waiving. Because when that was brought up, that was when the government was actually hurting real bad. The government is hurting today, but it's... The government is hurting today, but it's, we gotta be realistic. Mr. Lenzangin brought it up, some folks max out their credit card. Fine, bring in cash. We need to find a way to pay for the kiosk that Mr. Luhon brought up. Great. I know there's ways to fund the kiosk and not be the burden of the businesses, the $25, but there is a penalty. Mr. Lenzangin, there is a penalty when you don't file your GRT timely. Okay, so maybe we'll, I'll take out the $25, but they still need to understand, there is still, the penalty still exists. If you don't file your GRT on time, there is a penalty. With this law, the penalty will imply, if you don't file electronically on time, the penalty will still exist. And that's where the kiosk from Mr. Luhon's side, we need to identify a source of funding, and I don't know how much it'll cost, because right now, I know the department has computers, but doesn't mean it meets the kiosk. And I know, you know where I'm coming from with that one, Frank. So I'm only concerned that waiving the 25, removing the 25 is not that hard. Okay? I've heard that up there, when I was at Revenue and Tax, people complaining, I says, if you don't file an e-file, then shame on you. There's a kiosk, there's a computer here. All the employees gonna do is help you, show you how to do it, you show up, that same employee, maybe the same person gonna help you. But we wanted to move from paper to electronic, because the next move would be everything. From everybody in the businesses will file electronically, no more. And I think that's what you asked for, Mr. Kamatju, on this one. And then maybe we can include that. But I just don't wanna, by me including it, I'd have to ask for another hearing, because it'd only be fair to all the businesses to come in and say they support it. Because based on the numbers you have, it's more than 50% already doing e-filing. And I think the other business would enjoy it, provided they hear that the fee is waived. Now, if you don't file, there's gotta be serious penalties for like on the tobacco tax and all the other taxes that you're gonna file. If you don't file on time, we need to raise the penalty then. Because we made it convenient already, where if you use a credit card, you don't get charged a fee. You're a business, you can't use the same response that Mr. Lenzangin said, that I maxed out my credit card. Then you shouldn't be in business if you're a business and you max out your credit card. But I understand for the smaller business, when they max it out, because that's a personal thing, it's not a business credit card, it's their own credit card that they may have maxed out. Sure, pay cash, I have no problem, but file electronically. See, it doesn't matter. E-filing has got, has to be the way to go. Everybody's doing e-filing, only on Guam, or maybe on the other islands, but we need to change. We need to go with what the future is ready dictated, we need to go. And do I have any objection if we were to, if I was to try to attempt to propose that the fee be removed? Mr. Lenzangin, do you have any problem with the fees? I mean, the $25, I agree with you, we'll remove that, there's not a problem with that one.
Well, I fully support that the $25 fee is removed, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Because I would like to clarify, if a small business did not file on time, they will already pay a penalty and interest charge.
Okay, I support your 25. Okay, now we're talking about the fee on the credit card. Do you have any problem with that, if I was introduced to remove that?
Whatever piece that you can remove will be good for the people, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ms. Benito or Mr. Kamatju, any objection to that? And if you can give me the data of how much the government is actually avoiding paying by charging everybody?
Well, okay, there's two things that, when you look at this online filing app. Right now, you know, majority of these people that are filing online are filing online, but basically not utilizing the online payment, payments. So they, for example, Senator, I go and I file my return online, I owe $1,000 or $5,000. I print my return and I go to Treasure Guam and pay that, because I avoid paying the fee. So, but going back to your statement about, you know, what kind of fees are we looking back? You're talking about $10 million or less. I think when the law changed, basically, and now makes it responsible of the taxpayer to pay the fee, at that point in time, I think the government was paying roughly about $4 to $5 million a year on, and a lot of people are utilizing the, you know, paying using their cards.
But at the same time, Mr. Kamatju, how much was the government collecting? 100-plus million?
Yes, yes.
So then, peanuts.
I mean, that's something that, you know, the legislature, if they wanna go back and make it a convenient now for the taxpayer to say, okay, I'm filing everything online. And I think we're also moving towards the possibility of, in the next few years, to try to implement the 1040s online. I think Frank is working on that and, you know.
Yes, I like to see everything online, so it's easier.
Yeah, and if the legislature says, you know, they wanna board, I mean, take responsibility of the fees, then it is something that you can, you know, get something quicker. In other words, if you have the funds on your credit card and you pay it on your credit card, sometimes people don't have it, and they have to pay partially and, you know, and, but if your credit card is available and you charge it, then there's a fee. So that's basically something that, you know, that most people are doing now, is actually filing it online and taking their returns and actually going to Treasure Guam and paying it there, so there's no fee, there's no fee on the online.
But there's also, it's a combination of folks don't want to pay the fee, they'll bring in cash, versus the other folks that actually believe in convenience. It's like all of us, instead of walking into the bank, we go to the ATM. And we don't get, we don't pay a fee to draw money off our ATM unless it's a different bank. But I think that's something that the government needs to consider is, is, which, is there any specific banks that's charging for this fee? I mean, is there somebody associated? Because if it is, then I think that's where the government needs to start negotiating, because if the banks are receiving so much money from the government, we all understand that the people of Guam watching knows that when banks receive a million dollars in their account, they're investing that before it even comes back out to go to the government or go to the taxpayer. That's just a business transaction. And I'm just concerned that with the hundreds, and I say hundreds, because our budget is 800, okay, so there's hundreds of millions of dollars that are transacting through the wire, and there are actions that Mr. Luhon would like to get a piece of that, so he can get the technology in place. Mr. Lenzangin is looking at the business people that don't have to pay any more than they have to pay, because it's a matter of survival to some of these businesses, and that's what we need concern ourselves. And then the folks at Revenue and Tax, it's about processing and providing the Guam Legislature, the governor's office, the OP, everybody else that requires information, you being able to provide it expeditiously. Not my colleagues that are not here, but at the session saying, where's the report? Where's the report? Well, take a look, it's manual, what do you expect? We're not, we get what we pay for, and Frank knows that quite well. You know, if you don't pay for technology, then don't expect technology. If you pay for it, you'll get the answers you need today, not tomorrow.
Yes.
Ms. Benito.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you're right. This is a, this bill is very attractive for businesses and for individuals. It's an incentive for everybody to go online and file now that the penalties, the credit card penalties will be waived for them, so the convenience. It's great, and I believe collections will also go up because of this waiver of fees, because a lot of people sometimes don't have the cash, but they have the credit card. So I believe that it'll work for, you know, it'll be a win-win for everyone. So thank you for this. And as far as the $25 fee, if we feel that there's a lot of contradicting or objections to it, then we're fine with removing the $25 fee, but make it mandatory for everybody, and then we could just reject the return, their manual return, and tell them to file online. That's how the IRS does it, they return it, they return it back to the taxpayer. So let's just do that then.
Okay, we just, Mr. Lenzangin, I hope you agree with that, because you only mentioned $25, but electronically, it'll be how it'll be, well, I'll remove the $25 on the bill, but mandatory e-filing. Even if it requires them, they may be embarrassed, but they need to wake up. Come in, there's folks at Revenue and Tax that are willing to help you, help you file electronically, because they got computers, they'll help. The Department of Tax helps everybody. Sometimes even the folks, they don't want to help, I don't blame them, but they help, because that's what they exist for. And I think that that will take care of all the business issues you're bringing up. And I will ask the department that if they can find out what the cost is that the people of Guam have been paying for that fee?
Yes.
Because for the GRT, I'm, I have no problem leaving the bill introduced, no fee. If you pay by credit card to file your GRT, you don't pay no fee. When you credit card, it's with the government to absorb it. And I think we can come up with rough numbers of what it may be before it ever goes being completed, okay?
We'll provide it, and don't forget to add, if you're going to file a paper return, it'll be rejected.
Yes, well, I'm, I'll make the amendments on the bill, because the testimony today, we'll add it on, removal of the $25, mandatory e-filing. If you don't file it, it'll automatically be rejected, must be, the deadline penalties will apply, whatever the penalty is.
Yes, yes, and that's what I, I really wanna bring up to make sure that the other penalty that you're talking about, the 26111, that's a failure to pay penalty, which is basically, if you have a reasonable, and it's not due to any internal fraud or anything.
Right.
Basically, you're bound to ask for a request to have it waived if you file late. So, you know, whatever your reason why you're late, you know, you have that option to submit, submit a waiver for that particular section that you mentioned on your bill, which is 26111. That's the failure to pay penalty.
Okay, and then maybe you guys can come up with a list of reasons why you couldn't, you failed to file, and then the taxpayers can be given this. These are the only acceptable reasons. You're in the hospital, you're at war, whatever it may be, reasonable reason, not a, I forgot. I forgot you pay for your forgetting. And you know where I'm coming from, Mr. Lenzangin, and we can work with businesses, okay? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with your proposal, as long as the small business owner will not be charged a $25 fee if the kiosk machine is not working.
No, no.
Or malfunctioning.
Yeah, no, no. No, we're gonna move to $25, okay? We're gonna move this from the bill. $25 is gone.
But the small business owner needs to file still electronically. What, what, my point, my point here is, there are times that the machine is not working.
No, Mr. Lenzangin, that should not be an issue, because the Department of Revenue and Tax will have machines for them, okay? We can use the home don't have. The government is gonna have machines. They currently do. It's just a matter of them working it out now and who they're gonna tap to service the manamku, and even the young ones that are in business. Okay, so we're trying to make the government service the people. We can use the machine don't work. I think there's enough machines at Revenue and Tax, one is bound to be able to be working to take care of the GRT, okay? So we can take care of that, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Benito.
Okay, no, I just wanted to also address, if for any reason, you know, the system might be down when they were getting ready to prepare it, they show us some evidence of them preparing it, then that would fall under reasonable cause.
Yeah, well, and that's what I'm saying, that I know you can list down the reasons that's waivable from the penalty, but the excuse of, I forgot, pay the fine. Okay? Do we have anything else anybody wanna bring up? If none?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your time and consideration for calling this public hearing.
Yes.
I just want to express my frustration that the budget hearing was adopted without addressing public hearing on three taxes that was approved. And I hope, but you, you always call for a public hearing, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for addressing this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Bill, Bill 281-34COR has concluded its hearing. The committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation, and submit it via email to senatorjoessenauqsin@gmail.com. My office located at Rand Care Building, second floor, suite 3761, South Marine Corps Drive, Tumuning Guam, 961. Teduzmasi for your attendance and participate in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. Have a nice day.